Welcome tonight to the meeting. So we're going to, Mr. DeVillio is going to say the prayer tonight and then we're going to follow it up with the pledge of allegiance on the flag. So if you please stand, that'd be great.
Dear Heavenly Father, I pray to you in thanks. We thank you for giving us hope because we know through you that we can work together to achieve greatness. We thank you for giving us strength because we know through you that we can overcome even the hardest of times. We thank you for your love because we know that the devil is always prepared to spread hate and you taught us to love one another to banish that hate. And lastly, Lord our Father, we come to you and ask for forgiveness. We ask that you forgive the sins of the Baltimore Orioles to bring an end to their 18-game losing streak. In your name we pray, amen.
(Inaudible) (Inaudible)
Will we all look at prayer? That's for sure. Okay, so next on the agenda, council has an agenda in front of them for the 24th. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
At this time, I would like to make a motion that we strike. Would be...
Seven B.
The Parks and...
Yes.
The Parks and Recs?
Yes.
Okay, Bill?
Under introduction of legislation, item B, a bill to repeal and reenact Chapter 1 of 2, Parks and Recreation Talbot County Code as Parks and Recreation Gulf until we have a chance to go back and clean up some of the wording in it.
Okay, Mr. DeVillio, appreciate that.
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a motion in second. Madam Secretary?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVillio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Okay, hearing none. The chair moves that the minute, or the agenda, be approved by unanimous consent. Okay, the next is the minutes. As council have a chance to review the minutes of August 10th, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none. The hearing none. The chair moves that the minutes be accepted as unanimous consent. Next would be dispersments of the 7th, August 17th and August 24th. Council has had a chance to review the dispersments on the 17th and the 24th of August. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none. Chair moves that the dispersments be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, we've got that all taken care of. Okay, so the next is a presentation by Mr. Fred Hughes, the founder and president of Jazz Alive. So, Mr. Pack invited this gentleman.
I did. You want to start us off? Well, thank you, Mr. Callahan. During the pandemic course, everything was closed up and you couldn't go out and couldn't do anything. And the first invite that my wife and I received was from Mr. Hughes and his group at Jazz Alive. And ended up going down to St. Michael's and listening to Mr. Hughes play, him and his partner, and had a wonderful time. And found out that Jazz Alive is here to bring jazz back to the area. So thought that would be good for him to come and share with us all what Jazz Alive is doing and what it looks forward to doing here in Talbot County. So, welcome and thank you for coming.
Well, thanks for the invite. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I know you have a busy schedule, so I'll try to push through this as quickly as possible to give you an overview.
Thank you, Tyler.
Well, thank you. Okay, so I get to the, there we go. Get to the next one. There. Jazz Alive, I started in 2019 as a, and got our 501(c)(3) in May of 2019. Was planning to do concert here in Talbot County. My busy schedule as a performer kind of made that and some grants not happen, so we pushed it to the spring of 2020 and we all know what happened then. But our mission is, short, the dedication, dedicated to the preservation and continuation of this great art form. As a musician who has traveled 40-plus years of the world playing this music, the more concerts and festivals that I do, the more I see, well, I don't have quite gray hair, but I'm getting there, and I'm not seeing a lot of young people in the audience. So, the more that I've been in Talbot County and on the shore, the more I've been asked to do more things with jazz and so forth. That's how Jazz Alive actually got started. So, we couldn't do the, we couldn't do any concerts, so I started a series called Jazz Tales, which I took, brought people into my studio in Royal Oak. And we've done 25 episodes from July 15th through May 26th, where I brought these great regional artists into the studio. We'd play a little bit, we would talk about how they got to be great musicians, why it was jazz, and as a part of that, I wanted to make sure that we had kids involved somehow. So, we had over 30, 350 stream passes and over 128 students watched for free, including the Easton High School Jazz Band, thanks to a grant from Talbot County Arts Council. All 25 episodes Mr. Osterle was able to use in his curriculum, obviously the kids couldn't meet, so this was a way for them to experience, the Jazz Band to experience, and watch and learn how we get to where we are. And then I found some private donors to get Donna Ewing's Easton Middle School Band onboard with the same process. By the way, Ms. Ewing and I had known each other for a long time, and when I decided to do Jazz Alive, I said, "You gotta be on my board," so I'm proud to say that she's part of our board as well. So, thanks to private donors, we were able to make all that happen. We had a lot of students that really, really would reach out to us and say, "I had no idea this is the way musicians get started." And I kind of am sitting in the same boat in middle school and high school, and it's really cool that you've kind of shown us that, yeah, we're not alone in this. So then the next thing was concerts. How do we get this out? And we started actually deciding to do concerts before we were even sure what was going to happen with the pandemic. I talked to the folks at the Waterfowl Building, because I've always thought that's a wonderful building here in Easton, to do something and set it up. And they said, "Sure, we'll work with you. Obviously, if the pandemic happens, we can't." But away we went. July 24th, we had a full house with the Hot Club of Baltimore. This past Saturday, we had about two-thirds house for the Great Guitars DC Edition. And we have on the 18th of September coming up, the great harmonica player, Hendrick Merkins, along with guitarist Paul Ballenbach and Paul Angash on bass. Just in the interest of time, go to, I had pulled it up on a website there, but I don't want to get out of this. If you go to our website, you can see exactly how we have that building looking. And if you know the building, you know it's a gym. We put pipe and drain all along the one side of the building. We have a 20-by-20 stage there, great lighting and all that. So, go to our website and check out the bit, jazzfightinalive.org, and go to the events page, and you can see the pictures from the last two concerts. I guess we can't hear.
Correct.
No, pass that. In order to keep the concerts so that a family of four could come for 100 bucks, adult tickets were 35, 15 for students. Obviously, bringing in the kind of production that we did, it costs some money, so we were working on sponsorships. We still have one show left. The council knows if anybody that'd like to help sponsor, we have anything from the show sponsorship all the way down to just program ads. Our program looked like this. You can see, we had Eastern Utilities onboard, Talent Country Liquors onboard with us, APG and the new Groove Theater with Tally Wilford onboard, the Treda Avon Players, Ashley Insurance. So you can see there. So that's what we're up to with that. The last thing I want to bring to your attention is we have the Delmarva Youth Jazz Orchestra that is going to start in the fall here. And the idea with that is to have youth from across the Delmarva Peninsula be able to play with other great musicians from across the peninsula. From all of my performances and teaching and so on and so forth, there's great students down in Salisbury, over in Lewis, obviously here in Talbot County. They don't get a chance to play together that often, especially in a jazz situation. We have, because of the Eastern Shore Band Directors Association, a wonderful shore, all shore band, but that's concert band, it's not jazz. So Donna said, "We need to do a Jazz Band." So here we are. So we're auditioning at this moment. It's a professional-type setting. So these students are going to get the opportunity, because of all the conducting and things that I've done, because we're going to come in, we're going to rehearse, we're going to do ticket events, so they're going to learn the process of how this all works. So that's what we've got coming up in the fall. Unfortunately, since we can't hear, a little segment on Delmarva Light, that's all on our website. If you get a chance, they'll look at it. The last thing I want to say is that as part of the grants that we've gotten from both the Maryland State Arts Council and Talbot, their arts council is the idea of being able to take this music, Maryland State Arts Council in particular has said they'd really like to see us do more throughout the county. Well, that means we need to find places to do it. And that becomes an issue. So if the council has any ideas on how we might be able to do that, especially in the summertime, I think there's great ways in the county, in the right situation and done right production-wise, to bring in great regional artists, great national artists, if we can make it work. We can find a sponsor to underwrite the whole thing, it'd be wonderful, have free concerts and bring in great jazz musicians and have the students really see this thing firsthand. Because if they don't see it, I'm afraid by the time that I'm no longer here, this music isn't really going to be around. Thank you for your time, I really appreciate it, and I hope to speak with each of you individually. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. So sit right there, hold on a little while. Mr. Pack?
No, again, Fred, thanks so much for coming and sharing all the great and wonderful things that Jazz Alive is doing. I think it's a wonderful idea that you have as far as bringing this genre of music back alive here in Talbot County and within the region. So just want to wish you much success. I wasn't able to make the show, the last show, but hopefully we can, or we're not going to attend the next show in September.
Right.
I think you're doing a wonderful thing, I really do.
Thank you so much.
That's good. Pat?
Really wonderful to hear about a program like this. I absolutely love jazz music and maybe the elevator of jazz music called Smooth Jazz, I like that too. When my boys were in high school, they were definitely part of the high school band, but they both did the Jazz Band part of it, and that was just, that was just super fun. And to keep the youth involved in that kind of a music and actual real instruments instead of just, you know, the other stuff. I mean, real instruments are just amazing. So, thank you very much for keeping it going, keeping it alive.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Mr. DeVillio?
I think I was 25 the first time I went to a jazz club in DC. So I love that you're doing this for a much younger generation and getting children involved. But I think this just ties in perfectly with our community and doing events with the music that we do, the Navy Band that comes and on Washington Street. I would love to see some more of this. And thank you for getting it out, putting in the hard work to get everything straight with the 501(c)(3) and then helping educate our youth. That's excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice President?
This, this is a community, as you've already discovered, that values the arts. And so your addition to filling in, to filling out the offerings of the arts in this county is most welcome, and I know that my son, who is a student of Donna Ewing's at the Easton Middle School, has already been touched by your program. So I thank you for the, for the start to the program and looking forward to the great things to come.
Thank you. Just like council said, Mr. Hughes, we really appreciate you investing in Talbot County and bringing revenue to us. That's very important. And we appreciate all you're doing, and we definitely will support you any way we can. And please let us know if you need anything. Will do. Thank you again for your time. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Fred.
Okay, next on the agenda is introduction of a number resolution. At this time, Madam Secretary, would you please read the resolution to the chairman?
A resolution to rescind adoption of Resolution Number 281, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan, the plan, to reclassify and remap portions of certain real property located in the town of Trap, Maryland, associated with the Lakeside Plan Unit Development. The Lakeside Project, formerly known as Trap East, further described as Tax Map 54, Parcel 304, Tax Map 55, Parcels 14, 15, 17, 19, 44, 65, 83, and 85, and Tax Map 59, Parcel 4, the total area consisting of 865 acres, more or less, from S2 and W2, areas where improvement or extensions to existing or construction of new community, multi-use, or shared sanitary facilities are programmed for progress within three to five years, to S1 and W1, areas served or to be served by community, multi-use, or shared sanitary facilities which are existing under construction or have immediate priority status. To amend the plan to add certain water and sewer capital projects related to the Lakeside Project and existing systems for the fiscal years 2020 through 2030, and to amend the plan to update the narrative description in the plan relative to the Lakeside Project and existing systems as amended without prejudice.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Thomas for a few minutes to go ahead and help us explain where we're at with 281. I want to make sure the public understands that several weeks ago, we, the council did vote to have a public hearing with MDE in Trap. So I want to make sure everybody knows that too, okay? So that's where we were headed. So I need you to explain where we're at at this point.
Correct. And I'll just, I'll reiterate my comments during, from the July 13th meeting. Resolution 281 was a comprehensive water and sewer plan amendment resolution, and under state law, the, once the council approves these comprehensive water and sewer plan amendments, they then have to go to MDE for final approval. The council's adoption of the resolution is really just a preliminary approval. MDE can then, can deny it, they can approve it, they can amend it in part, they have a lot of, they have the total, the final authority on that. So, in this case, once the council approved, adopted Resolution 281, it then went to MDE, and MDE approved it in November of 2020. And then those amendments became part of the comprehensive water and sewer plan. So, at this point, there's nothing to, for the council to rescind. It's already, you gave your preliminary approval, it went on MDE, they issued the final approval. So, the only way to theoretically undo Resolution 281 would now be to do another comprehensive water and sewer plan amendment, and whether it's to change it back to its pre-281 status or to something else, that's the only way to do it. So, this resolution is not a comprehensive water and sewer plan amendment.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, council, does anybody want to comment on this?
I'd be happy to.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. DeVillio.
So, yeah, I have concerns with adding the biggest neighborhood Talbot County's ever had, but this is not the direction to go about doing that. We've scheduled a public hearing with the municipality that that neighborhood's going to go into. You just heard our Office of Law say that this, there's nothing to this. It's a waste of time. I don't know how many phone calls I get about planning and zoning being delayed, "I need my permit, my contractor's coming." What's going on? They're working on this. For who? For what? We want public knowledge, right? We want to take the time to work through our problems, we want to hear out, you know, what might be something that's really important right now, we can solve in the short term, not trying to address some large-scale thing. If there's a short-term issue, let's go ahead and address that. Let's have a public hearing with Trap. Say, "What do you need? We're your big brother. We're here to help you. You've asked for this, we've supported you along the way, now we're going to do that." We have an individual who has been requesting this. It's no secret. I haven't received any recommendations on why to do this. I'm all for hearing public comment, but there's a way to do that. This is not that. I will not be supporting this tonight.
Thank you, Mr. DeVillio. Mr. Pack?
Well, I think that the county attorney has already laid, laid out succinctly, you know, that 281 has already been incorporated into the Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan. I don't know how many times he can say that. There is nothing here to rescind. This is a bridge to nowhere. I will also agree with Mr. DeVillio, it is a waste of time, because in, at the end of the day, it doesn't accomplish anything. There is a way by which, if you wanted to remove the changes of 281 from the Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan, you would need to amend the Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan. That's the vehicle by which you do that. This doesn't do that. There are those things built into 281 that were good. Going from a two-foot, two-foot freeboard to a three-foot freeboard was a good thing. Going from 60 days of holding time to 75 days of holding time was a good thing. So, not everything in 281, to my point of view, was bad. I mean, taking that whole tire acreage and splitting it to split zoning allow our planning commission and the town planning commission future work discussions as, as a project were to, is to move forward. This just doesn't do it, Mr. Lesher. I'm sorry. It's really putting the council in a bad position to, to put something on the agenda for a public hearing, which you very well know is not going to accomplish anything.
Ms. Price?
I think there are some valid concerns and questions that need to be answered. But like my other colleagues, this is not the vehicle to do that. So I don't want the public to think that because we're not necessarily supporting the introduction of this resolution, which I hope will not be introduced, because then we have to go through the whole public process, which we already have in front of us, is lack of concern for some very valid questions that have been raised. Fortunately, I've, I've had the opportunity at Mako last week to have conversation with a couple of individuals, the secretary of MDE and some of his staff. And I have been able to forward a lot of information over to them. I've had a relationship with, with these people for years. And they are looking at this and trying to figure out what's, what's valid, what's true, what's not true. I want those questions answered. I trust my relationship with MDE that they will get that information to me. The public hearing has been changed from a virtual public hearing for MDE, I think it was supposed to be September 8th, virtually, to now, I believe, the end of October, and it will be at the Talbot County Community Center. So between now and then, and probably in the next couple of weeks, I'm going to get some information back from MDE, you know, were there, were there any violations at the Trap plant? Were there actually zeros? Was that just a miss, you know, something that didn't get entered properly? I don't want to take some, some valid concerns and blow them out of proportion. So, I think that this is the wrong vehicle to do so, that getting some questions answered and the public hearing, which will be in person at the Talbot County Community Center, is the proper way to go through this process. And once we get all that information, then we can make a decision, an informed decision on whether or not we do need to amend the Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan. So no, I won't be introducing this because this resolution doesn't do anything. And so I hope that this gets tabled until after we get some information from MDE and the public hearing in October.
Thank you, Ms. Price. And I would just add with my colleagues that that was the whole reason that we put the brakes on a little bit and wanted to get MDE, MDE involved and meet with them in having a public hearing there. So, I think, you know, instead of being on the negative side, I think we need to help Trap, and we have to look at Trap's future. And that's what we really need to do. I mean, we want to do things right. The council here is to do things right. It went through a long process to get to this point. Obviously, they've started that project. Everybody sees it. And I think Trap wants to do it right. I think us as a, as a council want to do things right, and we're going through the proper process, but this isn't the way to do it. There's a lot of people that sort of are negative about this and think that Trap, you know, pulls a wool from our eyes, and I don't think that. I don't think that way. We've had emails from their lawyer and their management, and I'm comfortable with what I was reading. But that's the reason we're having a public meeting with MDE, to clarify and clean all that up. We want everybody to be happy. That's going to, that's going to help people with Trap and, you know, give people opportunities to live there. So, I would ask for Mr. Lesher to think long and hard about this and do the right thing.
Madam Secretary?
Do I, do I have an opportunity to speak on this?
I'll let you.
Resolution 281 came to the council at, at a time of a series of higher-profile issues, and we've heard from a growing number of constituents who are concerned that, that their issues with this were not heard. And among those concerns is a provision of Resolution 281 that will allow the first 120 homes to be connected to Trap's existing secondary wastewater treatment plant, an outdated plant, that discharges nutrients into an impaired waterway. Trap does eventually plan to upgrade this plant to modern ENR discharge standards, but that upgrade is still years away. My goal in this process is to give the issue a fresh public hearing for the benefit of both proponents and the skeptics.
I have one other just point of clarification.
Yeah, sure.
Those 120 homes, okay, first off, from what I understand, again, I have a lot of questions that I want answered, so don't, but I do want to at least comment on this, that it's going to take years to build 120 homes, a couple of years. And what I've been told is that, okay, first off, those homes will not stay on the Trap plant. So while I want the Trap plant upgraded regardless of that, those first homes won't stay there. And the, there are spot, I think, five areas that we'll be putting, and Ray could answer this, but we'll have this spray irrigation and all of that. And they, the developer has said that would take about 18 months. So while you're building some homes, you're also building this spray irrigation plant with the holding pond. As soon as that's done, whatever homes there are, whether it's 10, 20, or 100, will be moved over to the other. So, again, while I still have some very important questions that I want answered about the process, I'm not as concerned with the fact that all of a sudden tomorrow, there's going to be 120 homes on a BNR plant. It takes time to build them, takes time to sell them, occupy them, and, you know, in the 18 months, this first pod, so to speak, is supposed to be built. So, there are people who have said that, you know, you're going to put all this, you know, effluent in there for all time. It's temporary. It might be for a year, and it's not going to be 120 homes, you know, in the next couple weeks or the next couple of months. So that should at least give people a little bit of security in knowing that, because you don't hear about them saying that it's going to get moved over as soon as that 18 months or so from now, that the developer's wastewater treatment plant is built. These homes are not staying on Trap, whether it's BNR or ENR, and that's an important fact to understand.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Anybody else?
Mr. Thomas, if we all vote, could we vote to rescind? And what would happen?
If you adopted this, if a majority adopted this resolution?
Yes.
I don't think it would have any effect. It's, it's not amending the comprehensive plan.
So all the public record that we're going to take and keep and maintain and the time is for not? Okay?
I think the proper place is all the people that want to speak to us. We have no more power. Do the public hearing in MDE at the community center at the end of October. That's where you're going to be heard, because we can't do anything. MDE can. Don't waste the county's time. We're going to be monitoring this, I'm going to be getting the answers from MDE. That's where you need to speak. You will be heard, but to speak to us does nothing.
Okay. Let's show a hand to who wants to introduce the resolution. Madam Secretary, could you please announce the resolution number and the public hearing date and its time?
Yes, this will be known as Resolution 308, and the public hearing will be
And the public hearing will be scheduled for Tuesday, September 14th, at 6:30 PM in this room.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Okay, let's move on to introduction of legislation.
Can I ask, is there an expiration date on this? Like, is?
A resolution now.
No. There isn't. So, in theory, we could delay the public hearing.
Forever.
Until after the MDE public hearing. And I wonder if Councilman Lesher would consider that? That would give us a lot more opportunity to collect information. Nothing's going to change in the next couple of months. And see if MDE resolves it. If they don't, then have the public hearing. I don't know whether you would consider delaying that till our first meeting in October. First meeting, I guess it would be the first meeting in November. And maybe things will have figured themselves out. It's just a thought.
Maybe there will be facts by the ground by then that would move this.
We've got to have the MDE public hearing, but there's nothing we can do.
I don't know that there's any order prescribed, whether we consider what is in the council's bailiwick, which is the issues that MDE is not concerned with, such as the connection to the existing TRAP.
That's not true. They won't look at all that. I've sent them all of the information we have received, every bit of it from both sides. And they are looking at it. They emailed me back within 24 hours. I expect in the next week or two, I might get some information from them. So, I just, that's why I would ask for even a couple of week delay, possibly on the public hearing, push it back a little bit because we may not have answers in two weeks. And since there's no expiration, we could move the public hearing at least to the end of September. And then, if we have some information, we can always keep adjusting the public hearing. But it just really seems premature. I respect the fact that you want to hear from people in here, but there's no, September 14th is not a magic deadline.
Another way too, Mr. Lesher, you could look at it, is when we do meet with MDE and the questions that do pop up and the uncomfortableness of the public and the county, they're still, if they're still not happy, they can let us down. They need to hear what MDE says first, in my opinion. If that could be solved, a lot of questions. And then, if it doesn't, we're still having to overhear.
Absolutely. I mean, if MDE can't resolve this, then we can come back with this. We can gather the information and we can push them and say, we are going to amend the comprehensive. Because again, rescinding 281 doesn't. Right. Then we do the proper procedure of possibly amending the comp water and sewer plan. So, I'm asking if you would consider a delay on the public hearing.
So, would one of those options be to leave it scheduled as is? And on the 14th, we could consider whether this is to move forward at that time or if we are pending information that we might get from channels from MDE other than the public hearing that would bear on our decision?
We have to do three weeks of advertisement, yes?
Correct.
So, if we do that advertisement now, people are going to be prepared to speak on the 14th. Could we agree to at least change it to September 28th, which gives us a month? And so, that way, we don't have to start the advertising quite yet. We have a couple of weeks to do that and just kind of compromise there on September 28th. And let's see what we get over the next two weeks.
Could I ask one question? If we wanted to make a change, shouldn't we go to the proper procedure to make the change?
Which is?
Rescinding 281, wait for the public hearing, wait for the information to come, and then follow through with a comprehensive water change if we need to?
Well, I agree with you. I don't think we should do any, first, I don't think we should do any of this until after the MDE public hearing at the end of October. I'm trying to see if Mr. Lesher is willing to delay the public hearing so we can gather more information, which MDE is going to get to me probably in the next couple of weeks.
It seems we have a process.
We do. But he's introduced the resolution, so there will be a public hearing. I'm asking for a delay of the public hearing.
And just a point of order, Ms. Price. According to the charter, once a bill or a resolution is introduced, within 72 hours, we have to announce the public hearing date and time. So, we would have to set something this evening at council's pleasure.
So, can we agree at least to delay it by two weeks to September 28th?
And the merit of, so the purpose of the public hearing is to gather information?
We have information we need to gather from the state agency. And it's a state agency, so I would like as much time as possible to compromise with you to allow them to do that so that we have their information in addition to the citizens of Talbot County's information because that's the information we don't have yet.
Well, would an alternative route to be to go ahead with the public hearing on the 14th, but then hold the record open for that additional information from MDE?
You don't have any support up here for this process. It doesn't do anything. If we got the information, we could just get rid of this. And if we feel like we need to do an amendment to the comp water and sewer plan, which is the proper vehicle, then we do that. Because this is never going to pass anyway because it's not the proper vehicle.
If it does pass, it does nothing.
That's right. Your county attorney is telling you that.
Your partner does that is with the land and not scavenge information. And you'll have a little bit of foot in it.
Madam Secretary, whose decision is it to set the hearing date, the public hearing date? If the majority of council wanted to delay it, can we do that?
I would look to the county attorney. I think the language in the charter just says that a public hearing date and time needs to be set within 72 hours.
Right, I believe it specifies how soon it has to be in the regarding resolutions. It requires a first and second reading. Doesn't say the second reading has to be at the next meeting, so.
So, if the majority of council wanted to not do September 14th and wanted to do a later date, do we have the ability to do that?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay.
Well, it looks like the majority wishes a later hearing date.
So, what date would council like to look at considering?
I don't know.
I understand that.
Yeah, but we're trying to compromise here, so let's try to.
So, Mrs. Price has asked for September 28th.
Well, no, now that I've figured this out, I'm going to go two weeks later than that. I'm going to go for the first meeting in October.
Which is October 12th.
October 12th. I'm going to make a motion to set the public hearing date for October 12th, which is about two weeks prior, which is still before MDE. My preference would be to go to after, but I'm trying to meet you in the middle. Let's go to October 12th, which I think gives more than enough time to get information. Go with October 12th. I'll make a motion for this hearing date to be October 12th.
Do you have a second?
It's either that or.
If we don't get a second, we don't schedule. What happens?
I will second for the purpose of moving this discussion forward.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary, can you turn the room?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Davilio?
Nay.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Okay.
Okay. It's resounding, yes.
All right.
So, October 12th at 6:30 PM.
Are we good? Okay, so let's move on. Okay, now we have introduction of legislation. Madam Secretary, at this time, could you read the bill into the record, please?
A bill to authorize Talbot County, Maryland, the county, to borrow not more than $600,000 in order to finance and refinance improvements to certain wastewater facilities in the county and to effect such borrowing by the issuance and sale of one or more series of its general obligation bonds payable from ad valorem taxes to be levied by the county, exempting the bonds from the provisions of Sections 19-205 and 19-207 of the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, authorizing the consolidation of separate series of bonds into one or more bonds, authorizing the refunding of such bonds, and relating generally to the issuance and sale of such bonds for such purposes.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Clark and Ms. May, do you want to come on, please? It'd be great.
Ray, you want to do?
Sure thing, yeah. I would just, for the council and the public, this is actually to replace the belt filter press at the Region 2 wastewater treatment plant in St. Michael's. This is basically, we're looking at securing a loan through the rural development. So, this is part of, I guess, the requirements, I guess, in meeting the requirements for rural development for the loan. I think this is also set up by the bond council, if I'm not mistaken, that we secured this information.
Okay. All right, that's great.
And so, I would just comment that we did review all the documents associated with this bond legislation with bond council. And they found it in good order, the documents in good order.
So, Ray, do you want to tell the public right now? Because it is shut down and we're sort of dealing with an emergency situation.
We currently, at this point, yes. We lost the roller in one of the, in the press. And so, right now, we're in the process of pumping and hauling. We pump and haul about three times a week. So, we're, you know, we have two, an aerobic digester and a sludge thickener. We're just taking right out of the sludge thickener and then processing the sludge at the biosauce facility.
Did you want to come on?
I'd just like to thank Ray and the crew down there. I mean, you have, we have an excellent staff who stepped forward. This is a mechanical failure, and they came together very quickly with a plan. So, this is an emergent problem, emergent issue that needs to be addressed. So, thank you for handling. Thank you, Ray, for your team.
Thank you, Mr. Sam. Thank you, guys. Okay. Please raise your hand if you want to introduce this legislation.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Secretary, would you please announce the bill number and the public hearing and the date, Todd, please?
Yes, this will be known as Bill 1493. And the public hearing date will be Tuesday, September 14th, at 6:30 PM in this room.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you. Okay. Let's move on to the public hearing. Madam Secretary, could you please read the bill into the record?
Bill Number 1492, a bill to establish the annual salary of the sheriff for Talbot County to become effective for terms beginning in and after 2022.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Thomas, could you sort of just give some reasons, comments on the bill?
Yes, so this simply, the sheriff's salary is set forth in the county code, and this simply changes the amount to increase it to the amount stated. That's all it does.
Okay. That's good. All right. Okay, at this time, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing on 1492. If you wish to speak, make sure you give us your name and your address. For an individual speaking for yourself, I'll give you three minutes. And if you're speaking for an organization, I'll give you five minutes. So, I'll start here in the first row here to my left. Would anybody like to speak on 1492? In the second row? The third? Fourth? Or the fifth? Okay. All right, I'm here to my right. Bill 1492 on the first row. Are you guys going to speak? In the second row? Third? Fourth? Okay, come on up.
Oh, I don't need to come up, but I certainly think.
Now, you got to come up.
Well, I didn't have anything prepared because I didn't know we were going to get to speak on that.
Yeah.
I certainly think we should.
Well, you're going to have to come up. I'm sorry. So, unfortunately, the public can't hear you.
Okay.
Give me a microphone.
Yep, you got to sit. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'm going to speak later, but.
Okay. Tell us where you are.
My name's Sherry Wilcox, and I live on Waverly Road in Easton. And I absolutely believe that it's time to raise the salary of our sheriff. You know, not just to mention that we have a wonderful sheriff, but because I know this would impact sheriffs in the future. But to get quality law enforcement officers, I do believe that we have to pay. And Talbot County is certainly one of the wealthiest counties in Maryland. And we should, we should be paying our law enforcement officers appropriately. So, I fully support raising him as, I think I heard the numbers. And so, the highest number that I heard is what I would support, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay. In the back row? I think this gentleman would be, you want to come up?
I actually had prepared a part of a presentation for him. So, if I'd be okay to delay it, but I'd still like to speak.
But you only can talk about this here at this time? Yeah.
Thank you, council. Hey, good evening, thank you. Dave Stepp from Easton, Maryland. Just to Sherry's point as well, I'd like to also, you know, provide my support for 1492. It definitely is well overdue, as we know, you know, our current sheriff and any future sheriffs, as right now, they're, you know, they're being paid at a below-average rate. So, I would certainly support the, you know, Measure 1492 to increase that. So, I'd ask that of the council, if you would support that as well, that'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Would anybody else like to speak about 1492? Okay. So, at this time, I closed the public hearing on 1492.
Correct.
And would council like to?
Would you like to make a motion to move it to third reader?
Oh, second.
Okay.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Davilio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Bill Number 1492.
I ask that so much be considered a reading.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Secretary.
Are we going to comment on this?
Yeah, I was going, that's what I was going to say. Yeah, so, council, do you want to comment on it?
I'll start. You know, in my view, the rationale for this change is the same as for any other senior position in the county. How do we attract and retain the talent that we want? Looking at comparables and surrounding jurisdictions, the proposed salary adjustment seems in line with the market. And just a reminder that this will impact only the, we've already, we've addressed in the budget and we can address in the annual budget, the salaries for the deputies and for all the rest. What we cannot do in the annual budget process is address the salary of the elected sheriff himself. And apparently, we cannot do that until after the next election. So, that's what this, that's what this bill does. It will impact the sheriff who is elected in 2022 and moving forward. And for those, for those very sound reasons, I will, I will support this legislation.
Mr. Davilio?
And I would completely agree. I'm in full support of this. After looking at different department heads that we've had, the problems that we've had, even attracting applicants for different department heads, this is one that's very important to me. It's one that believes in public safety, and I fully support public safety. Looking around at other sheriffs, I would say that this is probably low. And hopefully, hopefully, we'll still be able to attract and retain the good quality directors and sheriff that we need. Again, surrounding counties are paying more. And it always makes it difficult to convince somebody to come stay here and raise their family here and purchase a home here. And that's what we need for all emergency responders, to be able to stay here, live here happily, and be contributing members of the community. So, I'm happy to raise this for him, for the sheriff position, and support it for the next few, for any incoming sheriff.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Davilio. Mr. Pack?
Yes. I don't know, when I first looked at the bill and looked at the increases, the 18, an 18% increase in the position. And I was kind of alarmed by that, that large of a jump. And I did look at the numbers of surrounding, of the surrounding counties and where we are right now with our sheriff's department, our sheriff's position at $97,000 is right even with the rest of the surround. So, it's not, it's not below where the other counties are. As a matter of fact, it's above, it's above three of the other counties, actually. So, it's not that the sheriff's department is being underpaid or the sheriff is being underpaid by any stretch. And this position has been getting consistent raises over the years. If you go back and look, starting at 2018 going forward, the raises have been quite substantial. So, it's not like that, the position has not been getting cost to live in salary adjustments because it has been. So, the council has been very, very beneficial to that position. Again, I thought the 18% was a bit of a high jump. I would like to see the number somewhat as the median is for the region. If you look at the median number for the regions, about 101. And that's consistent to where the position has been getting those raises over the years, about $3,000 on average. I thought a $3,000 increase would get you at the median. If you look at the whole shore and look at the median amount, it's about $101,200 a year. So, that's where I am with it. Again, I just thought that large of a jump, what in the position was, I'm not comfortable with. not comfortable with, but I do think that if you get somewhere around a median level 101, 105, I could certainly agree with that. I think that, that would put you still at 105 at number, number three in the region.
Okay. Mr. Price?
Well, I think when people think about the salary, obviously you think about median, you also have to think about how many citizens is the sheriff serving and you, there's all kinds of complicated formulas and math that you could do to figure out what's the average, what's the median, but what's the value to Talbot County? And of course, everybody loves Sheriff Joe Gamble and we should never base a salary on the person because maybe we might not like the next sheriff, but we have to do what's right for Talbot County. And so while I think that the letters that we've gotten are supportive of an increase for him, this is not an increase for him. This is an increase for whatever the incoming sheriff is in 2022. I certainly support him and I hope that he runs again and that he'll win and he'll be our sheriff for quite some time, but it, this, this increase is, is the value of a sheriff here in Talbot County and we have, you know, had on the ballot to do increases in public safety. It is a large jump, but it's, I think it's, you know, looking at other, other department heads here in the county and how hard it is to attract people of this, of this caliber, that if it's not Sheriff Joe, we certainly want somebody else of that caliber and we have to pay enough to attract that. And the sheriff's position has, has evolved and, and they do so much more and in this world that we're living in, in this country, you know, there's a lot more dangers and, and maybe people are not appreciated enough and it's hard to attract people into law enforcement anyway. So it may appear like a, you know, a very large increase. We've done some for other parts of public safety that seem like a really big bump. So sometimes you have to do that big bump once and then you just go with the cost of living. So I am supportive of, of this for the value of a sheriff here in Talbot County.
Thank you, Ms. Price. So I'm, I'm supportive of this too. I think, you know, I think everybody here, we've got a special place we live in, in, in the community we live in, the sheriff's department shines here and we have probably one of the best sheriff's departments here in, in the state and we're going to keep it that way. Like Mrs. Price said, I'm, I'm hoping Sheriff Gamble can, can keep going on and get elected again so that, that, because he's set, he's done set a foundation for us and he's done set a high, a high mark for us. And you know, there's been a lot going on in, in the world and, and this county and I'll be the first one to admit, I feel safe with, with our sheriffs, deputies and all that stuff and they've done a phenomenal job. So if anything, Sheriff Gamble has really set by president for, presence for, for other sheriff's department, or, other sheriffs, I'm sorry. And it seems like his deputies really respect him and we've got a really good crew. I mean, when we first, when we, when he first took over things, you know, there was a lot of stuff going on in that department and, and this, and this council here helped, he helped, we helped him and we've got one of the best sheriff's departments here and I'm proud to be part of that and proud of, of what we've done for them and give them the tools to do a necessary job and a tough job because, you know, they're, they're, these gentlemen right here are out here now protecting us right now, you know, and that, and that's really hard to put a price to, it really is. So other than that, does anybody else have anything to say?
So do we take a motion to move to a vote or?
Yeah, we, we're going to make, make a motion, correct.
Motion to move to a vote.
Yep.
Second.
Alright, so third reader, okay, good. I, I read it the third time you were nice.
Yep, alright.
Okay.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye. It has to, it says it has to be read on three different occasions, so you can't do the second reader and the third reader on the same night, none of the rules.
We, we have on tons of stuff.
We have, yeah. Well, we'll move to the third reader.
Right, it had to be three different days, three different occasions, so we just asked for a third reader.
This is a bill, not a numbered resolution.
Okay. We can't vote after a public hearing, let's do.
This is not a numbered resolution. Has to be run at another occasion.
Says that each, every bill in order to pass should be read on three different occasions.
Yeah, this is, this is not a numbered resolution, it's a bill.
Okay.
Okay. Two weeks.
So we just wait another couple of weeks? Alright. He's got to wait a whole year for it, right, so two weeks, won't he?
And it might not be him, who knows?
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Price, this is not about Joe Gamble, this is a bill, thank you.
That's what I just, that's what I just said, this is not about him, this is about the next sheriff, I was very clear with that.
Be very clear about that.
I want the public to be clear on that.
Alright. Okay, now I'd like to move on to eligible votes. Madam Secretary, could you read the resolution to the record on 305, please?
Resolution number 305, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan to reclassify and remap certain real property located at 25154 St. Michael's Road, Maryland Route 33, St. Michael's, Maryland 21663 and shown on Tax Map 32 as parcel 164, Lot 1, from unprogrammed to S1 immediate priority status.
Okay, counsel, is there a motion, a second, to enact resolution 305?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we'll open the floor for discussion.
Well, we, we do, we do have, we do have the unanimous support of, of our planning commission on this, that it, it comports with the comprehensive plan. We have the, the support likewise of the Public Works Advisory Board, they've taken a look at this and, and given their expertise and close a look at this, I'm, I'm prepared to support the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Lesher. Mr. DeVilleo?
Ditto.
Ditto. Alright. Ms. Price?
Sounds good to me.
Uh, Mr. Pack?
Again, Mr. Lesher, I mean, Mr. Clark is there, but Ms. Lesher can say, that's fine.
Okay. Alright, Madam Secretary. Can please call the vote?
Yes, Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Next, we got, we got one more on the record, 307, could you read, read the resolution, please?
Resolution number 307, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan to reclassify and remap certain real property located at 5570 Leeward Lane, Tillman, Maryland 21671 and shown on Tax Map 44 as parcel 35, Lot 9, from unprogrammed to S1 immediate priority status.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Lesher, more.
Again, like, like the previous resolution, this one has the unanimous support of both our Public Works Advisory Board and, and our Planning Commission as consistent with our comprehensive plan. This is, this is yet another extension of the county's sewer, in this case, the one down in Tillman that will get properties off of septic in an area where there's sufficient density to, to serve them in this way. And so I'm, I'm prepared to support it.
Let's say we ditto.
Ditto.
Got you.
Sounds good to me.
Mr. Pack, just like, good.
No comment.
Okay. Madam Secretary, can you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Good job, counsel. Okay, next on board is our wonderful county manager.
Good evening, Mr. Council President, members of the council. I have a couple of things for you this evening. Under boards and committee appointments, specifically the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, there's a request for the reappointment of Jamie Latham to represent the TRAP district and the appointment of Carisha Hoffman, Talbot County Public Schools Athletic Director to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
And I support it.
So moved?
Second.
A motion, second.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Next one I have is the Talbot County Drug and Alcohol Abuse Council requesting the appointment of Valerie Williams, Field Supervisor 2, for Talbot County Parole and Probation to the Talbot County Drug and Alcohol Abuse Council.
Second.
Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Alright.
And finally, under boards and committee appointments, requesting the reappointment of William Foster to the Weed Control Committee.
So moved?
Second.
Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
The next item I have is a request from the Hog Neck Golf Course, I don't know if Owen Sutherland is here, Owen? He's coming forward and he's here to answer any questions council might have, if any, just wanted to have him here in case. They are requesting to utilize FY22 capital outlay funds in the amount of $61,131.45 from an existing project, the parking lot rehabilitation project, which was budgeted at $80,000. This would be for the continuation and completion of an approved FY21 project to replace pumps and to erect the pole building to cover that equipment. If approved, this would leave $19,869 in the capital outlay balance for the, the golf course. The golf course will reassess the parking lot project later in the budget year to determine the next course of action. And I don't know if you have anything that you would like to add or you have any questions for myself or Mr. Sutherland.
Counsel, discussing.
We've talked a lot about the golf course being an enterprise fund and I think this is proof that it's being run like a business when you have to make business decisions like this. Unfortunately, the parking lot needs to be repaid, it's been put off for years, but we need a pump house and so, or building for, for the pumps. So using the money to, to complete that project and then hopefully coming back in the spring after the winter time and checking to see what money's left over for the parking lot is a smart move. So thank you for that and I'm happy to, to get that irrigation system fully going here.
Appreciate that. Counsel? Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved?
Second.
Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
You got all pizzie, Owen.
Thank you all, I really appreciate that. I got a tarp covering the home station right now. I think Frank saw me knocking the walls down last Sunday, so.
That's because I hit it.
Yeah. So I, I really appreciate that. Thank you.
The next item I have, Ray Clark is present, Ray, could you come up front? Thank you. So we have a request from the Department of Public Works with regard to bid 1708 Open- ended Engineering Services Agreement. He's recommending, he's recommending an award be given for engineering design services for Black Dog Alley between Maryland Route 328 and Maryland Route 331. As you read in your agenda packet, requesting council approval to award engineering service to Wallace Montgomery in a sum of $422,850 to complete design service for road and drainage improvements on Black Dog Alley, again, between Maryland Route 328 and Maryland Route 331. And Ray Clark, your county public works engineer director is here to answer any questions. Ray?
And just so the council is aware, I mean, this is actually going to basically look at laying out the necessary right of way needs for us with private property and then ultimately development of plats and then also working to go ahead and acquire that property and then as part of that we'll be doing a road section and looking at the, you know, what type of road section we need for that area. And then with that, we'll go, be in the process of putting together the permits and submit the permits for review for environmental permits and at this, you know, we're looking at this, also bringing this project to a 50% of design and then what we're hoping to do is if, if we have the funding, we would go to 100% all the way through the corridor. If we don't have enough money, we can then break this up into pieces. We can break it up maybe doing the southern portion and focusing on the southern portion if that's what, you know, because I think that's the area that's in most need at this point in time and then if we can work our way up north from that point.
And just a reminder, as council does know, this is a, an approved capital improvement program project that was approved for FY22.
Correct.
To move forward and we are certainly hopeful, Ray's done a great job, as you know, lining up these infrastructure projects that are so critical and of course, we're hopeful that maybe our federal government will pass an infrastructure bill that might help some of these local programs as well. Thank you, Ray.
Thank you, Mr. Park.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
Oh, second.
Okay, a motion, a second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Thank you.
And the final item I have is a request from the Upper Shore Workforce Investment Board for concurrence with the 2021 through 2023 Memorandum of Understanding By and Between the Upper Shore Workforce Investment Board, the American Job Center System Partners and Participating Counties. As you read in your agenda packet, requesting council concurrence for this and again, you might recall Dan McDermott was before council recently to discuss this and asking again for council's approval to sign the MOU in this case.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Madam Secretary, could, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Alright.
Thank you, counsel, that completes your county manager report.
Okay, thank, thank you. Okay, so, so next, let's go ahead and get organized and get the list on the public hearing. And Mr. Lesher, would you like to go ahead and make sure everybody understands what was the public hearing?
Sure. Public comment is an opportunity for members of the public in attendance to address the council regarding any county matter. Any member of the public desiring to be heard by the council shall raise their hand away to be recognized by the council president. Once recognized, the person shall state their name and address and then direct their comments to the council as a body, not to individual council members or other members of the public. Each speaker shall be permitted to speak no more than three minutes. Those speaking on behalf of, of an organization shall be given up to five minutes unless otherwise authorized by the council president. Speakers are expected to be courteous and respectful, personal, impertinent or slanderous comments shall not be tolerated. Now, I guess we're getting, getting our list now.
Thank you, Mr. Lesher and I, I meant public comment, my public hearing, I apologize.
And our, our first, our first person signed up is Sandy Wieland of Easton.
I'm Sandy Wieland, 28535 Edgmere Road, Easton. I represent the Nurse Practitioner Association for the Rights of Choice. There is very, very little research about masks and the health risks and benefits of children wearing masks in school. Let me tell you some of the possible risks, however, that come with children wearing masks. It decreases the oxygen to the brain, it increases the CO2 to the brain, which results in drowsiness and headaches. It also may destroy the neurons if allowed to continue for any length of time. It creates metabolic changes in the body, it disrupts learning, concentration and impedes communication. Masks are not effective with saliva from your breath or moisture from breathing, let me bring that to your attention. Now, let me take you to a classroom. This is a typical classroom with elementary children. Miss Wieland, Henry has sneezed all over his mask and it's snotty and it's gross. Oh, Henry, come on now, you have to put a new mask on. Now make sure if you put the mask on, it must be worn when the mask police come. Mary, I want you to read. I can't read because it makes me cough and I can't breathe. "Well, breathing is really not that important, Mary. Just make sure you're wearing your mask when the mask police come." "Sally, what's the problem? Tom has stuffed all over my mask and it's dirty." "Pick it up and shake the germs off, but whatever you do, don't put your hands on your face because your hands are filthy." "Tristan, what's the problem with you?" "Well, I want to know who's making us wear these masks. This is my face and my body." "Well, Tristan, it's actually the government. You see, we're giving up our choices little by little and our bodies will no longer really belong to us if we're not careful." "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they're endowed by the Creator with certain inalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And also governments are instituted among men, deriving their first powers from the consent of the governed, that whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of people to alter or abolish it." Prudence must be the goal of government. Allow parents to choose whether their children should wear a mask. There's no benefit. The benefit that I was able to find in research is that when the child wears the mask, it may help the teacher not get sick if the child's a carrier. The teacher can wear the mask. The teacher can get the injection. We're still trying to approve injections for young children. Give parents a choice. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Wieland. Appreciate it.
Next is Dan Andrews.
Let me say something, Mr. Callahan.
This is public comment. Council doesn't comment back. If I may, if I may. No, you may not. This is public comment for.
If I may.
You have council comments after.
Wait to public comment.
We are not the, we are not the school board. This council, this council has no jurisdiction over students wearing masks. We have no jurisdiction at all. We cannot tell Dr. Griffiths or the school board to make the student wear a mask or not wear a mask. So before we go through 30, 40 minutes of lecturing us on wearing masks, we don't have that authority. We really don't.
They know that they can do what, they can say and come up here and do what they want to do and say what they want to do. That's what a public comment is.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, Mr. Callahan. As part of the.
Next is, appears to be, is it Dawn Andrews of Easton?
My name is Dawn Andrews. I live on Marshview Road in Easton, Maryland. And I'm here, I don't expect the council to be able to do anything about what I'm bringing to your attention, to Mr. Pack's point. I work at the hospital. I'm a nurse and I'm not speaking for the hospital. I'm speaking for me. But I am a vaccinated nurse and on October 1st, 570 of my colleagues at the hospital will be terminated because they are not vaccinated. You cannot do anything about this. But I wanted you to be aware that I'm worried for our community because five, and that's 570 employees in just that building, not the off-campus sites. Dr. Huffner told us this in a WebEx meeting, that there are 570 employees just in the hospital that are not vaccinated. They, he says that he is prepared to terminate them October 1st if they're not vaccinated. We are a science-minded community. I know that these people will eventually get the vaccine, but right now they are worried for their bodies. They're worried what it will do to their bodies. There's not enough longevity in research. And many of my coworkers are women of childbearing years and they're worried about their fertility. I think those are legitimate concerns. I'm vaccinated. My worry is what happens when they leave. And I'm working even more short-staffed than I already am. Right now, since COVID, we lost many nurses and doctors who retired early and I don't blame them because it was very scary. And we all came to work. We put on the PPE that they gave us. We rewore masks that we were trained for years and years and years. You would only use one time. We rewore them. The hospital cleaned them for us. We put them in a big dirty, well, it was a big clean bucket, but they took it off, said they cleaned them. I don't know what they did with them, brought them back and we rewore them. But we all showed up and these people who showed up through COVID are now being threatened with termination. And like I said, the council can't do anything, but I wanted you to be aware because I'm worried about our community and what's going to happen. Some people right now are waiting five to eight hours to be seen in our ER. I think it's going to get worse. So I just wanted you to know. Thank you for listening.
Next is Libby Beam. Next is Libby Beam.
Hi, council. My name is Libby Beam. I live here in Easton, Maryland. And to Mr. Pack, we know this is not your decision, but parents are speaking to get our message out to the public since the decision was timed with no board meeting scheduled to hear us. Let me start off by saying I have a little boy in ninth grade at Easton High School. I represent a ton of parents outside who are scared to come in to speak. I'm here today to talk about the recent mandate of children wearing masks to school. Kelly Griffith took it upon herself to mask mandate our children when all through summer school for the last two and a half months, children were not required to wear a mask. One week she said she was not, there was no mask mandate, the next week, mask mandate. I've seen Ms. Griffith's emails as to why she's enforcing a mandate, but she is missing a few things, mainly data, evidence, science, common sense, and basic human decency. She has presented no facts at all, so let me tell you that now. Here they are. COVID poses almost no risk to our kids. 4.2 million children have tested positive at a total of 0.008% of them have died. What about the flu? The CDC estimates that 480 kids have died from the flu. Did anyone on the board suggest at any point that masks be worn during flu season, which is more dangerous to kids than COVID, and that's a fact? Now, do you know what it's called to force children to wear a mask for a fear of a virus that almost poses no threat against them? It's called child abuse. You want to look up a disease, look up munchkins by proxy because that is exactly what it is. If you think I'm exaggerating, then how would you respond to a parent who forced his child to wear a mask? Do you know the psychological damage we do to our children by forcing them to cover their faces, teaching them the air is toxic, that everyone around them is sick? Have you wondered about the health effects of forcing them to breathe through sweat, spit, and dirt-soaked rags every single day? What about learning to read and they can't see the teacher enunciate the words? What does it do to a developing child's immune system if he or she has to wear a mask all day, every day? Ms. Kelly Griffith, the Board of Education, and the Talbot County Health Department Health Officer Maria Maguire are satisfied to place this burden on children and parents anyway. And why? It's not to keep them safe because they are safe. It's not to keep the adults safe because they can get vaccinated if they want to. Now, you do, now, no, do you make yourselves feel, they do it to make themselves feel better and to protect themselves politically. The child's mask is a symbolic security blanket for you not to, for you not, for them. It's a disgrace. And including, it's a disgrace and the Talbot County Department of Education should be ashamed of themselves. I will never submit rules that surrogate or dismantle people and put them against one another. Let's not forget, there is no state of emergency in place per the governor and the CDC only recommends not mandates and mandates violate human rights. Thank you.
Next is Jan Greenhawk.
My name's Jan Greenhawk. I live in Oxford. First of all, let me say that I believe it's an elected official's duty to listen to the citizenry, whether it's your responsibility to cover a decision or not. And that's why these parents are here tonight, because they can't talk to the Board of Education. The decision was made. School starts at a very short time. They have no input. So that's why they're here. And if that bothers you to listen to that, I don't apologize. Anyway, I taught for 30 years. In those 30 years, I taught hundreds of children. Some of the children I taught are on the county council. I'm not anti-mask. I am for individual choice. The issue of mandating masks in schools is an extremely important one to me because I'm very connected to how we are now grouping our children by different identity groups. We're talking about making them, oh, it's a specific racial group or specific gender group or socioeconomic group. We are not seeing children as individuals anymore. So when you have a mask mandate in school, what happens? Well, when you go in a classroom, all the children have a mask on. You no longer see them as individuals. You can't see the bottom part of their face. All you can see is eyes. So you no longer know who that child is. You can't see their entire face, their expressions, how they feel about things. And as a teacher, this is very concerning. A teacher needs to see a child's face to be able to teach that child. I can look at them, see how they're feeling, if they're getting something, if they're having a really rough time. And children need to see their teachers' faces. It's how children get cues from the adults. You're doing a great job. It's how a kid makes a connection with a teacher. And if you've studied education at all, you know that one of the most important things in a kid being educated is making a connection with a teacher. And that is lost when both the teacher and the child are wearing masks. Let's don't even talk about the fact that a young child can't see how a teacher is forming words. They may not even be able to hear because I'll be honest with you, when you're wearing a mask, it's hard to hear what a person is saying. We're setting these kids' educational progress behind. We're setting them back four to six months already with the shutdowns. And now we're adding mask mandate in Talbot County that's going to even set them back further. In closing, I just want to say, I see a lot of my former students, they're adults, and I recognize them because I still see that little kid that was in my class some 30 years ago. I see it in the adult face. I remember hearing a 10-year-old boy, he was speaking to a school board in another state, and he said how bad the physical effects of the masks were on him. He said he had headaches, anxiety, and difficulty breathing. But to me, his most important point was this. A few weeks ago, I ran into my teacher outside of school. She didn't even recognize me because she's never seen my face before. I miss seeing people's faces. Breathing freely doesn't seem like something we should have to ask other people to do. And I agree with him. As I said, I've taught for 30 years and in that time, we've had AIDS, you know, AIDS was the advent of AIDS, SARS, swine flu. And as dangerous as some of those diseases were and how little we knew about how they were spread, we never put our children in masks, ever. So I think that what we're coming up against is we're coming up against a superintendent making a decision that is a default, easy decision to make. Bring back our children's faces. We want them to be individuals again and not group identities. Thank you.
Next is Elena Casalapour.
Thank you, Mr. President, council members. I realize this is not the right forum, but I am going on record anyway. So I believe I have the right to be heard. I'm a consultant. I advise governments on how to make good policies that take into account the possibility of unintended negative consequences. I will use the next three minutes to explain why the universal mask mandate in our schools is a bad policy and why it must be lifted. Let me start by asking, what is the goal of the mask mandate? Is it to protect our children? No. According to the American Academy of Pediatrics, severe illness due to COVID is uncommon among young children. Since the beginning of the pandemic, and that includes the spread of the Delta variant, less than 0.03% of all child COVID cases resulted in death. More children die from the flu every year. It has been mentioned before. At the same time, APA warns us about the impacts of the pandemic on our children's emotional and mental health. Masking does a great deal of harm to our children. It affects their emotional and mental health, jeopardizes their development and ability to learn, and frankly, makes school an unequivocally negative experience. My five-year-old is going to kindergarten this fall. This is a critical age. The social skills he learns now will set him up for life. So my question to you, council members, is what will he learn? He will learn that the air he breathes is full of germs. He will learn that touching or hugging is not okay. He will learn that school is a sad place where he's forced to do things that make him miserable and uncomfortable. What he will not learn is that school can be enjoyable. He will not learn effective communication. How can he when smiles are hidden behind a mask? Oh, and these things are real. A friend of mine, Brittany, who's protesting the mask mandate outside, has a daughter, a little girl named Jamie, Janie. After a year in kindergarten wearing a mask, Janie underwent a personality change. From a social butterfly, she went to hiding her face once spoken to, showing signs of social anxiety. Perhaps the mask mandate aims to protect teachers, adults? Well, the vaccine is widely available and if one decides not to take it, it's their right. Just like the decision on whether or not to wear a mask. Some of you are wearing it. Others are not. That's okay. So what does this policy try to do? From where I stand, it looks like it provides a space for political virtue signaling at the expense of the vulnerable, our children. This, ladies and gentlemen of the council, is where a well-intentioned policy becomes a bad one. This is how a vibrant five-year-old becomes just another brick in the wall. Let me put it plainly. Throwing an entire generation of kids under the bus to state a point of politics is morally deplorable. Forcing children to wear a mask is cruel and abusive. I urge you to do the right thing and leave it up to the families to decide the level of risk they can live with and whether or not their children should wear a mask to school. I thank you.
Next is Clive Ewing.
Thank you, council. My name is Clive Ewing. I live in Easton, Maryland. I'm commenting on the school superintendent's masking mandate. In my consideration of the many negatives and positives here, if there are any, let me just quickly review them. You got to look at the child's health and there's been plenty of medical articles written that shows that, you know, oxygen is diminished, carbon dioxide is higher, the health of that child is impacted negatively. There's a disruption of learning, okay, and that communication between the teacher that we've already heard about between the student and the teacher. It's highly impactful. Those are real negatives. There's no doubt about it. There's plenty of peer-reviewed articles about it. There's no doubt. Now, what are the positives to wearing a mask? Can't find any. For that kid wearing one of these masks, doesn't protect them from the virus at all. Zero. There's no debate about that, right? We all know that. All right? How about the community spread? Well, what did the CDC say? Their report came out in May. And what did they say? No statistical benefit to doing that. They looked at it closely, but they said, you know what? Can't do it. So I'm happy to provide that in my comments to you and the school board so they can see that. That's from the CDC, right? That's not, you know, the crazy talk. All right? So why are they mandating universal masking? You've got all these very, you know, there's no doubt about the negatives. The positives aren't there. They just aren't. And so it's an easy call, right? Allow the parents to make a decision on how to treat masking with their kids. And there is a way forward, right? The Board of Education has policies. I've sent them questions on how do parents proceed from here? We have the superintendent saying you got to mask. You have a board policy that says if you want a mask, you got to, you got to ask permission. What's their answer to that? All right? They're not responding. You know, you guys talk to them. You're friends. You don't have to, but you're our elected officials. We'd like to hear some answers, right? Because we're not getting them. All right? Lastly, I'll say, I think it would put the county, the school at risk from a legal standpoint if they actually prohibit an unmasked child from going in. All right? If that happens, it won't be pretty and they turn them away. I think that's a legal issue in my humble opinion. And then if kids are coerced to putting masks on, they really don't want to, but they want to be in school and they put that mask on and then there's harm to them, right? Because of wearing that mask, who then is liable? All right? So I think those are questions that need to be answered. We haven't heard from the Board of Education on that. Okay? So again, thank you for your time tonight.
Next is Dave Stepp.
Next is Dave Stepp.
Thank you again, council. So again, my name is Dave Stepp. I'm from Easton, Maryland, and speaking today on behalf of the Talbot Family Group. Members of Talbot County Council, thank you for your time and attention, as well as for your service to our county and community. It is truly appreciated. May I also applaud the sitting council on your efforts in the first half of 2021, especially for the funding of LEOPS. Our men and women in uniform who selflessly serve our citizens day in and day out are more than deserving of that well overdue benefit. Contrary to most public comments these days, I don't sit before you today to discuss a particular position on the Talbot Boys statue, but I ask for your consideration and action as a charter county council on other pressing and urgent matters that we currently face. Number one, critical race theory, or CRT, being embedded and taught in Talbot County public schools. For anyone not familiar with CRT, in short, it is indoctrination technique used by teachers and administrators that stereotypes cultural norms and brings division between races under the guise of unity to our highly impressionable youth. My family has personally been affected by CRT's tenants in Talbot County public schools, and I can assure you, its tactics are truly divisive. In addition, many of our own teachers disagree with the concepts of CRT but are afraid to speak up for fear of retaliation or being fired and losing their well-deserved pensions. In my hand, I hold $509,798.57 worth of receipts paid to the Pacific Education Group with Talbot County taxpayer dollars from the years 2009 to 2018 for CRT-related material, teacher education, and administrative training, and other various expenses, a number that frankly made my jaw drop. To put it bluntly, CRT has no place being in Talbot County public schools, nor any school for that matter. Inclusivity does have deep roots in Talbot County, and that inclusivity should be both taught and celebrated. From where we sit right now, we have the rich history of Unionville just a few miles down the road, the Hill just a block away, and a statue of Frederick Douglass just a few feet away. My ask here is to never fund CRT or CRT-related material, inspect that no tenants of CRT are being taught in our schools, and ensure any teacher or administrator who ignores such an ask is appropriately and fairly reprimanded. It is time we stand up for true and real unity, not the indoctrinated division that CRT brings. Number two, forced COVID-19 vaccinations and digital passports. With our federal government promoting door-to-door solicitation of COVID-19 vaccinations in organizations like the Eastern Shore Area Health Education Center currently recruiting for such an endeavor, it is crucial that we not only respect the rights of those who wish to be vaccinated, but also those who do not. I'm not sure if you are aware, but COVID-19 digital passports are already here in Talbot County. The Talbot County Health Department has launched an app called Vaccine Check, and it comes to us from a company named Pinpoint U.S. Talbot County is already seeing the effects of vaccine passports right down the street at the Avalon Theater, where according to an August 12 article in the front page of The Star Democrat, "All audience members, staff, and performers will be required to be fully vaccinated to attend an indoor event." I do recognize that the Avalon Foundation is a private venue and has the right to make such a demand, but it opens a doorway to such demand being imposed onto necessity businesses or institutions such as grocery markets, schools, or hospitals. My asks here are simple. Ensure that all Talbot County residents have the freedom to choose when it comes to their health, ban vaccine check, or any subsequent attempt of vaccine passports to ensure that there will be no gateway to a two-class society depriving our residents the opportunity to procure life's most basic necessities and services. Point number three, mask mandates. In sticking with the theme of freedom of choice, the same should apply when it comes to masking. We live in a world with politically charged data, politically charged science, and politically charged news and social media outlets. This is America. If you believe a mask works, and it is the right prophylactic for you and/or your family, then by all means, wear one. If you simply believe that is your God-given right to just breathe, then don't wear one, nor should you be forced to by any government entity or rogue government official acting in an unconstitutional fashion. My ask here is incredibly short and simple. Ensure no mask mandates in Talbot County ever again in schools, in public, period. Number four, support for our local law enforcement by nominating a responsible county police accountability board. Last but certainly not least, the sitting council is certainly aware of the responsibility you have in nominating a police accountability board in response to Maryland's HB 670, more commonly referred to as Maryland's Police Reform Bill. I'm sure our sheriff and deputies would agree, it would be a shame to see all the gains made with LEOPS be negated by a poorly-appointed police accountability board. Again, my ask here is short and simple. Please utilize common sense when sitting this board. Please choose unbiased, responsible, non-politically-charged individuals who not only understand law and order, but also understand the daily sacrifices and split-second decisions that our men and women in uniform have to face daily. In summary, get CRT out of our schools now and never fund any aspect of it in the future. Allow individual and family choice when it comes to vaccines. Get digital vaccines passports out of our county. Never require proof of vaccination for access to goods, services, or to attend in-person Utilize common sense when sitting a police accountability board. For reference, I'll be sending an email copy of my address today to each of your Talbot County email inboxes. Please feel free to reach out anytime for supporting documentation, questions, or further clarity. I'd like to thank you again for your time, attention, service, and most importantly, action.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Bruce Corley, and I live in Easton, Maryland. Some of you know me, and I also sent a letter to the Board of Education and this council regarding my opinions and observations on Talbot County Back to School Plan.
Get a little closer to the microphone, just a little bit, or is that one not working as well? Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. I have received two written comments back from this council, and they were split upon political parties and opinions. One was more positive than the other. Neither addressed the points I raised in the letter. Additionally, I received no responses from the Board of Education, and I truly appreciate the time taken by those who actually read my letter, and I especially respect the opinions that I received back in writing. Thank you. As I truly believe, we need to reinforce the fact that everybody's opinions matter. I'm not an anti-masker. I strongly feel that people should be allowed to make their own decisions and take any and all necessary precautions they feel necessary to protect themselves and/or their children. In my opinion, going back to mask mandates now treats people like they're not smart enough or wise enough to make their own decisions regarding either individual health or that of their kids. The former director of the CDC, Dr. Redfield, recently stated, "Masking children should be based on science, not CDC opinion," and he requested that CDC provide any data they have on the issue. Do you think Dr. Redfield knows something that we do not know about CDC having masking data pertaining to children? After all, Dr. Redfield was the director of the CDC just nine months ago. Two days ago, a very interesting article was printed in The New York Magazine authored by, pardon me, I don't know how to pronounce his last name correctly, David Zweig. Zweig stated that the CDC conducted a large-scale study which analyzed the spread of COVID-19 in schools. Zweig stated, "A few major news outlets covered its release by briefly reiterating the study's summary that masking then-unvaccinated teachers and improving ventilation with more fresh air were associated with lower incidence of the virus in schools." However, Zweig went on to say, "The summary left out an important factor. Distancing, hybrid models, classroom barriers, HEPA filters, and most notably requiring student masking were each found to not have a statistically significant benefit." In other words, these measures could not be said to be effective. The specific article was picked up by several news outlets. Can I validate the data? No, because I don't have access to the report. But if any of the council members would like the article that I'm referencing, please let me know, and you know I'll be happy to send you the link, okay? Another question I have, it's kind of rhetorical, but do any of you think this county should investigate the validity of this data before forcing schoolkids to be masked in order to go to school? Does our school district and/or our county health department have scientific data to reinforce the current proposed masking requirements, and do they have data on, or have they researched the adverse effects of masking kids? Or is the masking decision simply being made by reiterating the current CDC masking mantra recommendation? If the CDC does have this data, why didn't they provide it to Dr. Redfield when he asked, and why has it been kept from the public? If masking information is being withheld from us, what other crucial information regarding COVID-19 is being withheld? In closing, you have a lot of local talent. You've heard some here tonight, and you know what? If you all ask us, I'm positive we'll come together and help you all out. If you have questions on this, you're stuck on something, please just ask. Let's break down the political barriers. This is our community. Let's take care of it. Thank you for your time.
Next is Nicholas Heller.
Hi, my name is Nicholas Heller, and I'm from Cordova, Maryland, and I'm eight years old. I do not like the masks because I can't breathe, and I get sores on my face. I have to take medicine for it now.
Good evening. My name's Teresa Heller, mother of Nicholas Heller from Cordova, Maryland, and I'm speaking on behalf of my child and my oldest child sitting behind me. Both of them are struggling with the mask mandates and masks in general. Nicholas is now on antivirals, both orally and topically, and has been since the start of the masks in the classrooms. It has affected not only him socially, emotionally, but it has also affected him in learning. He has taken remedial reading, has actually lost his confidence in reading because he cannot see the teacher's face. He cannot read and learn the language that he is being taught in the classroom. My oldest has been going to therapy now after we've been finally able to get into a therapist due to severe depression and high anxiety. And as I can see here, it should be a parent's choice. Counsel, two individuals choosing to wear a mask and a few not, but it is a personal choice. This is not my child's choice to wear a mask. He feels very uncomfortable. My children feel uncomfortable. I feel uncomfortable with it. It should be the parent's choice, the child's choice, to wear these masks in the classroom. We don't want to affect their learning, their social functions, they're losing who they are because they're too young. They haven't learned the social cues that we as adults learned because we didn't wear a mask. We survived SARS. We've survived all these other bird flus without these masks, and now these children are being forced to wear a mask and losing everything that they've never even learned yet. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sherri Wilcox, and I live in Easton, Maryland. A little slight shift in topic, I think. A very smart person shared this with me recently. The CDC has confirmed fully vaccinated individuals who contract the infection have as a high viral load as unvaccinated individuals who get infected, which proves there's no difference between the two in terms of being a transmission risk. If vaccinated individuals can be infected, carry the virus, cause it to mutate, and then transmit it to others, how does proof of vaccination promote public safety? The censorship going on in our country is unbelievable, and I've found that many people have no idea they're making decisions in a vacuum, and they don't know. Here's something curious. Here's places who don't have vaccine mandates: the White House, the CDC, the FDA, Moderna, Pfizer, the World Health Organization, and Johnson &amp; Johnson. What do they know that we don't know? Here's a little fact. How long it typically takes to have a vaccine developed? Yellow fever, 35 years. Polio, 45 years. Measles, 46 years. HSV, 102 years, no vaccine. I can go on, but guess how long for COVID? Six months. Senator Ron Johnson put out a letter yesterday, August 22nd, pretty hard-hitting that he sent to the CDC, the NIH, the FDA. He said, "The fast-track vaccine approval decision appeared more political than scientific as it skipped the usual formal advisory committee meeting and did not fully account for the reports of deaths and disabilities suffered by people being vaccinated." The VAERS database is a government database, Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting System. It's been in existence since 1986, when the government released all the big pharmaceutical companies from any kind of liability for their vaccines that they push. Once that happened, it went from about eight vaccines to 72 vaccines now being given to our children. But here's some information in Senator Johnson's letter. As of August 22nd, over an eight-month period associated with the three COVID-19 vaccines, there had been 4,632 deaths. 32% of them occurred within two days of the vaccination. A total of 5,701 adverse effects were reported, including 51,000 hospitalizations and 16,000 permanent disabilities. He noted that of the 12,791 deaths eclipsed the 8,966 deaths related to all prior vaccines reported on VAERS for 31 years. Okay? Everyone, why do we have mandated vaccines? Why are we letting vaccine passports happen in our country? This is outrageous. Additionally, it has been noticed that the VAERS reporting is typically expected to be 1% of the actual number. The number is a lot more than what's reported here. I don't know where I am on my time. I'm sorry?
We can always allow them to finish, too.
I'll wrap it up really quick. Recently, two 13-year-old boys with VAERS ID numbers died two days after the Pfizer vaccine, or 13-year-old boy died after the Moderna vaccine, three 15-year-olds, five 16-year-olds, three 17-year-olds, 2,500 reports of anaphylaxis amongst 12 to 17-year-olds, 342 reports of myocarditis. By the way, there's also, it's happened in Talbot County, an 18-year-old here, 86 reports of blood clotting, again, another person here in Talbot County. I can go on and on. This information is available. It is on the VAERS database. This is the government website database. I just think that with all the censorship that's going on, and I know, because I got in Facebook prison for reporting this exact data that is on the government website. So I'm trying to get this information out so the people at the hospital know, and if there's anything that you can do as leaders of our community to not have vaccine passports and to not mandate the vaccine, I beg you to read and learn and educate. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm here on behalf of the organization. My name is Keith Watts. I live on Toman Island, the Association for Courtesy, Dignity, and Respect. I had some prepared remarks tonight, but I think instead I'd rather speak from the heart to all of you. What I've heard in the last several minutes is a lot of anger, a lot of fear, and that's not unjustified. And I also heard a lot of love for people who care very passionately about their children. Earlier, there was a presentation about music, about jazz, and the slide, luckily for me, is still there. Jazz, and then that next word there, alive. And then that next word there, alive. Because in order to enjoy that jazz, one needs to be alive. You know, I'm not a doctor, not a medical doctor anyway, only a jurist doctor. And so all I can say to you is that there's a lot that we don't know. And I wouldn't want to see not one life, whether they're Republicans or Democrats, Muslims or Christians, Jews or Janes, it doesn't matter to me because the virus doesn't discriminate that way. The virus does what it does. Today, so far, 640,800 Americans. If you take that number of Americans who are no longer alive and lay them end to end in caskets, that's 849 miles. So you can get about 75 miles past Chicago from here, driving by nothing but caskets. Or drive from here to Gainesville, Florida, nothing but caskets. And worldwide, 4,442 and some. All I'm saying to you is we all rely on each other for trust. Government works because the people trust it. When you pull up to a stop sign, we all have a social contract with each other that we're going to stop. We're not just going to drive through. I think this is an amazing community of people. And I think everyone wants the very best for themselves and for their children. I think you are all doing your very best to try and get us to that place. There are going to be disagreements, and reasonable people can disagree. I may date myself, but I do remember polio and the children that I grew up with who had polio. And I will also tell you that I have seen the refrigerator trucks on First Avenue in New York that are the morgue trucks. And I sent an image that's too late for you to show, but I will say this to you. There are the people who had the double lung transplants. I know someone who is in the hospital here in Easton now who has been vaccinated twice and they have a breakout vaccination and they are struggling. So I am saying to you, if you love your children, if you love the people you live with, please keep an open mind. And why not? Why not take the precautions? If nothing happens, fine. But if you save just one life, you know, we don't see people, we don't see them stacked like cordwood. So all we see are statistics and we see things in the newspapers. But when you see it in your home, or when you know your friends, or someone who has died, who had to say goodbye to their mother or father through a nursing home window, I wouldn't want anyone here, or anyone in Talbot County, or anywhere in the world to have to say goodbye to their child, their mother, their father, their sisters, their brothers. No one. Thank you for your time as leaders. It's not easy. I appreciate your service. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Watts. Next is Allison Somers. Allison Somers not present? Somers, S-O-M-E-R-S. If not, next is Ella Marr.
Ella and her father had to leave, so Roderick asked if he could take their place.
Well, welcome, Roger. How are you doing?
Roderick.
Roderick, how are you doing?
Good.
Good, good. So come up to the mic so we can hear you, okay?
Push that mic down.
Yeah.
It bends down.
There you go.
I'm Rick.
How old are you?
I'm seven years old.
Where do you go to school?
I go to school at Tomlin Island.
What would you like to say?
I don't like to wear my masks because I'll chew on them and I'll get food all over them, all over them.
That's all that Rick had to say. However, I would like to take a moment to talk about Ms. Jan real quick. My name is Jennifer Dean. I was originally Jennifer Hightower. Ms. Greenhawk was one of my teachers. Mr. Fisher was also one of my teachers. I was one of those children that was mentally, emotionally, physically, and sexually abused when I was a child. If it wasn't for my teacher standing up for me, I wouldn't be here as I am today. I know it is not your job. I know it is the Board of Education, but you are our elected officials, so please help us stand up for our children. That's it.
Okay, thank you. No Patricia Glennon present? If not, next is Dr. James Kelly.
Am I the last guy? It's your... I'll be the anchor man. Good afternoon. I am Dr. James Kelly. Is this mic working?
Yes, we hear you, yes.
I'm a physician and I am a psychiatrist of 35 years. Been in Easton, is my home, for the last 31-plus years. We understand you are not the Board of Education. You are more important than the Board of Education. You are our elected officials. So we're appealing to you because we elected you to protect us. So just a couple details, and then you guys can ask me questions if you would like. There's no study anywhere in the world, anytime, that says wearing masks has ever benefited children. No study. We do have a study, a recent study from the CDC, just out recently, was done in Georgia, 90,000 students. It was done between November and December of last year, and it compared kids that were wearing masks to kids that were not wearing masks. No difference, no benefit. There is no benefit ever noticed between kids who are wearing masks and kids who are not wearing masks. So the information's in. The science is saying that to force people to wear masks is not helpful. But yet, this is where we are. So why are we doing something that has no benefit? The virus itself is about 1,000 times smaller than the little holes in your mask that you're wearing. The virus comes and goes through your masks. If oxygen is coming through the mask, the virus is coming through the mask. The only difference would be if someone spits on you, okay? COVID is not that... It's not as dangerous to kids as the flu. The regular flu, every year, if you go back and look at statistics, decades more kids die from the flu than they did from COVID. We never required masks for the flu, but now we have something that's less dangerous and we're doing measures that don't make any sense. The schools are for the kids. We pay a lot of money. We work very hard to send our kids to school to learn, to grow, to understand things, not to be put in a position where they think they're incarcerated or they're being forced to do things that they don't want to do. The masks really have adverse effects. It's harmful. Over the last year, in addition to masks and the other things, increase in depression, anxiety, panic, suicide, suicidal behavior in kids and adults. Part of the problem with masks is that we're teaching the kids to be paranoid, to be afraid, to not participate, to not see their friends, to not engage, to stay in the house. And I think we're continuing a charade by forcing kids to do these things. We're taking parents' rights away. So this is a very serious, serious step. As far as I know, this is the first time any agency of the government of Talbot County is actually violating parental rights. And for us to stand by and let this happen is a serious breach in the trust. So it really is not appropriate for us to permit this. Now, we understand you're not the Board of Education. You're more important than the Board of Education. You may not have direct authority over individuals in the board, but you can submit a resolution, simple or otherwise, to condemn this behavior from the Board of Education. You have the power to submit, pass a resolution to condemn mask mandates, to condemn vaccine mandates. You have the power to pass a resolution to limit or prohibit any behavior from any agency that restricts parents from having their lawful rights. These things you could do. I would like you to do this. I can see no reason why you wouldn't want to do this. The information is in. We have a policy that was put in place for who knows what reason. Ignorance, possibly. Paranoia, possibly. We don't know. But it's not based on the science. It's not based on the science. So when a policy is put in place that is harmful, and it is harmful to force people to give up their rights, it is harmful to force children to do things that they see as restrictive. We already have more problems in the school than in previous decades, and now we're going to add another layer, another layer of contention. It's unnecessary, it's unhealthy, and it is absolutely wrong. Please pass a resolution condemning, forcing masks on children. It's unhealthy for them, it's not helpful, the information is in. Look at the CDC study that just came out recently. If you need any other information, it's certainly available. There are plenty of medical organizations that are against forced mandates for masking or for vaccines. One is the Association of the American Physicians and Surgeons, AAPSonline.org. They have numerous references and information that they would be very helpful. Contact me, I'd be very helpful to you if you want. I'd love to be of assistance. Does anybody have any questions for me?
We appreciate your time.
Thank you. Please.
I can't. Of course I can.
We're not supposed to be answering questions.
I'm asking him a question. I'm not answering a question.
I think it's appropriate to ask a follow-up question.
Okay.
So we've heard a lot tonight about mask mandates, vaccine mandates, and the science and the CDC and all that, and most of it has been pertaining to children. Do any of these apply to adults in general? I mean, if it is, if you would say, you know, breathing in things through a mask or whatever is not helpful, harmful to your child's health, does that pertain then to adults as well in your medical opinion?
I think as far as we know, there isn't much of a difference whether you wear a mask or not. And even the masks that are the higher grades, as long as the oxygen can get through, the virus can get through. So because the virus is maybe 1,000 times smaller than the average mask. The mask may actually be worse because we breathe in and out, so the normal germs that we have are taking them on and off, putting them on a counter, so you're exposing yourself to other kinds of things that ordinarily wouldn't be close to your face. The other thing is, is that the vast majority of people don't wear the mask that cover the whole area. Kids certainly are not going to do that, right? It's hard enough to get kids to stand up when they're supposed to stand up, sit down when they're supposed to sit down, pay attention, but to require them to do that. So it is a facade. And so what my concern is, is that this is a policy for the comfort and convenience of administrators, unelected people who are making policy that is harmful to the children, violates the parents' rights, and the science is opposed to their decision. The school should be for the kids, not for the comfort of the administrators.
Right. My question was specifically if that data translates into adults as well. Thank you very much for that answer.
Thank you.
But, Doctor, my question to you is this, but you do know you have an elected school board, though.
It's the administrators making the decision right now, not the BOA.
But they are an elected body.
No, but Kelly did it.
Right. And so the administrator unilaterally made a decision.
But I'm asking, you asked for questions, and my question to you is that you do realize that we do have an elected school board?
Yes. Thank you.
But I think, Mr. Pack, some of the problem is with these folks, they didn't give them opportunity to speak.
Well, I'm hearing that now, which I'm hearing that very clearly from them, and that's why I'm asking if that elected body was reached out to other than writing, or did any members of the elected body come to you for a meeting? No?
Wouldn't it be nice if they gave us the chance to communicate our concerns before a decision was made?
The elected body did not make this decision.
Right.
But the elected body is the one that hires the superintendent. We don't. They have, that is an elected body.
Right.
I'm asking the citizen here.
Right.
If the elected body reached out to them, if they heard your concern, you're telling me no. Is that what I'm hearing? That the elected body did not hear your concerns?
I'm sorry, so we have an unelected official that unilaterally made a decision without consulting the people, the community, or the, I assume, the county council?
No, and she doesn't have to.
Right, but she didn't.
Yeah, but I'm saying that she is hired by an elected body. My question to you is that, who is your rep? Who's your rep? Where do you live?
I do not even have a child in the public school system.
No, but who's your rep?
So...
If you live in Talbot County, you have a rep. Who's your rep?
Your Board of Education representative, what district?
Can't, don't know the name off the top of my head right now.
And who's your rep? You don't know your rep?
I do know my rep, yes.
Okay. Does anyone else know their rep?
Is this an Q and A?
No, it's not, Mr. Clime. I'm asking a question if you don't mind. I'm just asking a question.
No, I live in the town of Easton. Do you know who the rep is for the town of Easton?
I think it's broken up by districts.
Say again.
It's broken up by district, depending on where you live in the town of Easton. That's okay. That's okay.
Do you know yours?
That's okay.
Do you know your rep?
So my request is for you guys, our elected official, to do a resolution that would be protective of our children at this point in time. Would you guys do that for us?
I don't think that we can answer that here. I think we're all taking in all the information that we've heard and certainly appreciate everything that we have heard tonight, and I think it needs to be considered.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all we can ask.
Mr. President, I have no more names who have signed up in advance.
Okay. Did anybody not get a chance to sign up and would like to come up? Okay. Yes, ma'am, come on up. Send your name and address, please.
I am Susan Frank. I live at 28517 Augusta Court in Easton. I have been raised on the eastern shore of Maryland for my entire 68 years. And the last 20 of those years, I've spent in Talbot County. I moved from Talbot to Caroline, where I spent my entire educational career. My daughter, who now lives in the state of Texas, I used to beg her that she would be like my friends, who their children live in Talbot, Caroline, Dorchester, because I want my grandbaby here with me. I am so proud of the fact that she lives in the great state of Texas because there the parents and the citizens have the freedom of choice. I am embarrassed to say I come from Maryland when I go to Texas. My grandson, first grade last year, and we are in the DFW area between Fort Worth and Dallas. He went to school September 8th. He was in school all day, every day. He was in school all day, every day, and he even stayed for the aftercare program. The schools never shut down. Now, did they have mitigation? Yes, unfortunately, you had to sit in the cafeteria next to plastic, so you couldn't talk to anybody. They wore masks, and the virtual grandparents' day really did nothing for me, but it kept him in school. This year, two weeks ago, at this time, because it would only be 7:00 there, we were having open house. My grandson went in to meet his teacher. Masks were optional. The joy in that school that night was unbelievable. Parents meeting their child's teacher, who they had only seen virtually last year. Teachers interacting with kids. It was amazing. Now, you... Some of you are probably going to say, "Well, suppose, how come they didn't have to shut down? Maybe you're not interested in that." They did mitigation to allow that that wouldn't happen. My daughter is a teacher in the inner city of Fort Worth. They were in school all year, last year, with similar mitigation. And I can tell you that my own daughter, who worked in a middle school, sometimes it was her duty to maintain order in the gym where they put kids that they thought had been exposed before they said they could not attend school. So they allowed them to come to school, but they had them separated with adult supervision. I have to say, I own a home in Texas. I am a proud taxpayer in Texas. I own a home here, and I am a disgusted, disgruntled taxpayer for what is happening in our schools that our taxes are paying for. So I'm proud of my daughter for living in Texas, and I plan to be following her shortly. And I'll take my financial resources and protect a state that protects citizens. Thank you.[1108.63][1108.63](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Ms. Frank. I think there was one more person that helped.
Hi, Jennifer, mine, it's fine.
You sure? Yeah, come on up. You've been sitting there very patient.
Yes, I have been. I forgot to sign up. This is my first council meeting. My name is Sunny. I'm here from Easton. I live in town. Sunny Antonelli is my last name. To the previous speaker's point, Maryland was one of the most moved-from states the last three or four years. So people are voting with their feet and they're leaving the state. That's besides the point. I had an observation... I wasn't going to speak, but I had an observation, sitting here in front of you guys. I had noticed Mr. Pack specifically would take off his mask whenever he would speak. I just wanted to say that, doesn't that defeat the purpose of wearing the mask? And that was all I had to say.
Okay, thank you.[1161.13][1161.13](APPLAUSE). Okay, anybody else? Okay. All right, let's move on to council comments. Mr. Pack.[1178.13][1178.13](LAUGHING).
Wow. Well, we had a good time at Mako last week, so... Where are my notes? I know coming up in September, we have our annual employee cookout on the 17th of September. Other than that, Mr. Callahan, I'm going to forego, for the sake of time, any other announcements.
Okay. We can argue.
Yeah. Yeah, no.
Ms. Frank.
I do want to thank everybody for speaking tonight. I understand that you didn't have the opportunity in front of the Board of Education to do it in a timely fashion. I hope that they heard what you had to say, and we will, you know, I don't know that there's really anything that we can do other than give you a forum to be able to have your voices heard, which is exactly what public comment is for. Yes, Mako was last week, first event that we've had in two years, and you might think, "event, why is that important?" What has been missing, you know, through all of this, you know, COVID is, you know, we heard about seeing faces and relationships and interacting with each other, and having the opportunity finally to have not only all the locally elected officials, Democrat, Republican, big county, little county, the delegates and senators, and the work that gets done, sometimes after hours, in putting those relationships back together. I sensed, as I was running the virtual meetings this past session for Mako as their vice president, I sensed people, you know, turning off their cameras, moving away from each other, and what little dialogue there was, people were definitely seeming to go back into their own corners. And so last week, having four days, and we had the same attendance that we had two years ago, it did not keep people away at all. We set up the rooms a little differently and all that, masks were optional, and so we could see those faces again. So normally I give a different report on Mako, but bringing everybody back together and reestablishing those relationships, I think is going to benefit the counties, and obviously including Talbot County greatly, to be able to interact with, you know, obviously each other, but the delegates and senators, so that when we do go and testify on what our county issues are, we have that relationship with one another, and that is just so important. It's one thing to come and testify, but if you have a chance to get to know somebody as a person, and see their face, and interact, and all of that, it's just so important. It was a wonderful conference. Everybody had a wonderful time, a lot of amazing sessions on education. So don't think it's just about, you know, networking after hours. We had amazing sessions where people who are newer can go to the Academy Core Sessions and they can get their certification on various aspects. And then there's just continuing education, the county department heads and professionals. This conference is as much for them as it is for the county elected officials. And so, you know, we have our, you know, our health department and our emergency services and all the various departments, and the county attorney affiliates, and they were able to speak on, you know, I think, hopefully Patrick spoke on an issue that just came down, a decision that we got, to share it with other counties. And so it's an incredible conference. There was probably 2,500 people there, all told, and ending with the resounding crab feast, which we got rained on for the first time in years that I can remember. But it's a very important opportunity for everybody to get together. I was really honored to be a part of it and take place... Take part in the opening ceremonies this year, and so it was really wonderful, and thank you for allowing me to share that.
Yep, and thanks for doing a good job in Mako.
Mr. Davilia.
So, to be honest, I think I had been elected to the county council maybe like six or nine months before I found out that we were also the Board of Public Health. And I hate to bring that up and open that can of worms. I'm sure I upset the rest of the council with announcing that here. But this is one of the first times where we've had public comment, and everybody stayed and listened to the council comments, so thank you. Or the majority did. And I do have kids at chapel. They go to school with some of the kids who are here. I've got one at Easton Middle School this year. It's going to be a new school for us, and a lot of new changes there. And my kids are really divided. It's my youngest son, we'll ride all the way home with him chatting the whole way, talking without even taking his mask off and not even notice it, versus my oldest son's making a point of ripping it off before he's out of the school door to let everybody know his feelings on it. And I raised them both in the same home, so I don't know where they divide on that. But... And I think that's kind of symbolic of the community. You know, we are different. We're all coming from different backgrounds. We have a different perspective. Social media certainly doesn't help with the false information that's spread blatantly. But we're getting information from a lot of people. And one of the pros, I thought, the vaccination rate went through the roof in Talbot County. People just were signing up left and right, jumped right on board with the vaccination. And I thought a lot of that had to do with the hospital and healthcare. It's one of the major employers in Talbot County. And I've always said if you're not... If you don't have a nurse in your family, you're probably married to one, or you've got a good friend who's one in the hospital. And there's a lot of sciences coming out of the hospital, there's a lot of discussions about that, a lot of information. And when it comes to me making a decision on the Board of Public Health, I try to take that information from those leaders, and from the leadership at the hospital, from Dr. McGuire at the Health Department, and reading medical journals. But a lot of that gets by me. I didn't know there was an American Association of Physicians...
And Surgeons.
And Surgeons. I didn't know there was that organization. I'm the son of a surgeon. But it's a unique time that we're dealing with, and there's a lot of variables with this. I think Talbot County Public Schools has always worked hard to make sure that no child's left behind, you know, good, better, best, never let it rest. They... I think they do try hard. Could they try harder? Could they look at this and adapt a little bit more? Certainly. Have they thought about substitutes? How many substitutes are they going to need? You know, if COVID does break into a school, what's going to happen? How does that look? How does that look for daycares? It's very fluid, very dynamic. I appreciate everyone coming in tonight. I appreciate those who've sent over information. Like I said, I don't always get to see everything. I don't always know where to turn and look. So I just ask that you be honest, be polite, and share factual information with us to help us make the best decisions that we can. Because at the end of the day, we are held accountable by you guys, by the community, and we're just trying to do the best, and there isn't a doctor up here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davilia. Mr. Lesher?
I just want to acknowledge and thank all those who came out tonight to express your concerns. That's all I have.
Okay. I'll sum it up by saying that you guys broke my three-minute rule, okay? That was the big thing, okay? So, once again, it was... What you guys did tonight was very respectful. I hope that the school board did see this. I hope they did. I was proud of you guys in the way that you could express yourself. I learned a little bit tonight, that's for sure. You told me some facts. Dr. Kelly, I really appreciate you coming up here and ending with some of the facts. I appreciate it. A lot of you had really good information for the council. That's what we're here for. We're here to listen. We're here to hear your concerns. Like Mr. Pack said, I know we don't have authority to do things in the school, but, you know, you've brought stuff to our attention that we can maybe build from and help, because that's what we're here for. But like I said, really appreciate you guys being here, because it means a lot to the council that you can come here, you can express your thoughts, and we're going to listen to you. That's what we're here for. So, being that said, Mr. Lesher, could you go ahead and...
The county council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, September 14, beginning at 6:00 PM. The council will be convening in open session at 4:30 PM and immediately adjourning into closed session to discuss real estate, legal, and personnel matters as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. On Tuesday, August 31st, the county council and the Board of Education will be meeting at 4:30 in the Talbot County Free Library Easton Branch. The meeting is open to the public. Therefore, is there a motion and second to adjourn tonight's meeting and reconvene as noted?
So moved.
Second. Madam Secretary, if you could, please.
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Mr. Davilia.
Aye.
Mr. Lesher.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
And Mr. Pack.